Matthew bravely fought in Obobo brain cancer for the past two years. When he began homeschooling, Matthew stayed connected to his Gilbert Elementary family, attending events like Chung Achee and Pancake Breakfast. His classmates sent him cards and made video for him throughout the year. As his health declined rapidly, he remained comfortable at home, surrounded by his loving family, and spent the final months at Children's Hospital Orange County. Matthew loved video games, Pokemon, and going for walks. He is survived by his devoted parents, his brother Anthony, who attended Rancho Alameda's High School, and his 21-years-old sister Kimberly, who was an extraordinary caretaker throughout his illness. He will be greatly missed. Ruth Diaz began working for the district in that 1999 as a gate teacher at Allen Elementary School. In 2005, she became a program facilitator at Morningside Elementary School and then quickly promoted to principal at Marshall Elementary School in 2006. In 2008, Ruth joined the secondary team as assistant principal at both Jordan and Rosson Intermediate School until 2015, when she continued her leadership as principal at Rosson Intermediate. In 2022, she became principal of our Virtual Learning Academy. Ruth was a wonderful leader to her staff and students and caring colleagues to GGO's family. She was a loving wife and mother, devoting her time and energy to her husband, Joe, her son, Jonah. Ruth would be deeply missed. Joe Casado joined the district in 2005 as a teacher in a moderate, severe special education program at Jordan Intermediate School. He worked at Jordan until 2013, when he moved over to Los Amigos to follow his passing for teaching high school students, and he remained at Los Amigos for the past 12 years. Joe was a beloved figure at Los Amigos. He always taught with kindness and patience, the kinds of things which make not only a great teacher, but also the great person. He was always encouraging, always smiling, always uplifting, and he loved to share his student's success with parents. It was obvious how much Joe truly cared about his students. Joe was also a devoted father to his son, Ari, and his daughter, Camely, Camely, and it will be greatly missed. We honor to have his father, Joe, Paul Casado, and his wife, Marla, here with us today. We extend our deepest condolences to family and friends, Matthew Leonis, Ruth Gomez Diaz, and Joe Casado. A moment of silence begins. Moment of silence now, Anna. Please be seated. Okay, we continue on with the agenda today. Can I ask if any member requests to speak? Oh, first, we need to get on a recognition first. Let me invite Assistant Superintendent Dr. Stephanie Hefflin, Assistant Superintendent Secondary Education, to introduce our student representative to the board.
Perfect, thank you. President Nguyen, member of the board, Dr. Moffey, staff and community members. It is my pleasure to present to you our student board representative for the 2025-26 school year, Ms. Kristi Gettichew. Kristi is a rising senior from Rancho Alameda's High School. Before coming to GGUSD, Kristi attended the Fullerton School District until attending Alameda's Intermediate in the eighth grade. Kristi has already demonstrated tremendous leadership skills on campus, participating in CSF, tennis, and Girls League, as well as serving as an ASB officer and member of the superintendent's Student Advisory Group. She is passionate about finding solutions that increase empathy and inclusion. She truly wants to make a positive difference in her school, district, and community. She is excited about this new leadership opportunity that we know she will excel at. As we look ahead to the 2025-26 school year, we're excited to introduce a new district student leadership group, the GGUSD Students Set It. This initiative was inspired by a suggestion from Dr. Moffey as we explored new ways to amplify student voice across the district. In past years, student input was represented by our student board representative, who also served on the Board Representative Council, also known as BRC. A group made up of four ASB students set from each of our eight high schools, along with a student board rep totaling 33 students. This BRC group meets monthly to share school updates and student perspectives. Kristi was part of BRC this past year as well. To further strengthen this model and provide more consistent leadership and engagement, we created the GGUSD Students Senate. This new group consists of eight students, one from each high school, who are elected by their peers. The Students Senate will meet five times throughout the school year and serve as the district-level student leadership team. Their responsibilities will include helping plan and lead BRC meetings, building community amongst our student leaders, gathering input from students at their sites, sharing key information with their peers, advising district leadership on student matters, as well as serve on their high school superintendent's Student Advisory Board. One member of the Students Senate will be selected each spring through an interview process conducted by the Office of Secondary Education and the Public Information Office to serve as the student board representative and join you at the dais for this upcoming school year. That representative will be Kristi. We will have an alternate student board rep as well for times in which Kristi might be unable to serve on the dais, and that alternate will be Alvin Rayo, who is a rising senior at Santiago High School and also serves as the ASB president at Santiago for the upcoming school year. The launch of the GGUSD Students Senate reflects GGUSD's ongoing commitment to elevating student voice and creating opportunities for students to lead alongside school and district leadership. We are excited not only for this new leadership group, but for Kristi as she takes on this new opportunity to represent all of our GGUSD students as the student board representative and also be part of our inaugural GGUSD Students Senate. She will be joining the board on the dais next month, and we wish her best of luck in her position as well as in her senior year.
Kristi, we look forward to welcome you to our dais here. When the school year starts, enjoy the summer now. Okay, next item on the public comments. Can I have a request for anyone to speak?
We do have three.
Yes. The first request is from Mr. Nicholas Magana.
Good evening, board members, district leaders, and members of my community. My name is Nicholas Magania, and I'm here not just as a student, but as someone who has believed in or been in a leadership role for years. I joined ASB to be a part of building school spirit and making a positive difference on my campus, and I believe in the core values of our schools: leadership, inclusion, and safety. I would like to talk to you about my journey and experience on campus to paint a picture as to why I'm addressing the board today. I was constantly bullied by two seniors and my ASB advisor. Two seniors served on our executive board as president and vice president. Mr. Nguyen led through fear and intimidation as he constantly reminded us that he was protected by the union and that there was nothing we could do to get him in trouble or fired. I felt like that kind of message created a toxic environment where students felt unsafe and able to speak up for things that were wrong. Eventually, I did speak up. I went to my administrators and later the district around April this year. My mom and I submitted a formal complaint with evidence expecting an investigation, and to our surprise, nothing was followed up on. The complaint was canceled without our knowledge, without any explanation as to what the outcome was, and there was no type of formal investigation completed. I was devastated and felt like my complaint was being silenced. So I left ASB, not because I wanted to, but because staying meant continuing to be hurt in a place that no longer felt safe. And once I left, it felt like the problem was considered solved as if I had been the problem all along. But I wasn't the problem. I was only asking for help. Later, we found the ASB constitution on our own because it was never given to us. It showed that I had every right to speak up, and so I moved forward in creating a petition to remove our ASB vice president, but our school secretary, Ms. Brown, said that she wanted to rip it up. We were treated like we were the bad ones for simply standing up for ourselves. I am not alone. There are more students who left this year, and I know that there are others still there who feel voiceless, afraid to speak up, and convinced that nothing will change. The district says we're no place for hate district, but what does that mean if students can be mistreated by both peers and adults and nothing is done? How do we expect student leaders to build safe, welcoming campuses when we ourselves aren't safe? I am here to ask this board to take a serious look at how we hold both student leaders and staff accountable, and I'm asking for student voices to be included in this process because we are the ones experiencing these issues, and we deserve a say in how it's fixed. If nothing changes after this speech, then silence is officially the loudest message our district sends. Thank you for your time and for allowing me to bring this issue to light, and I truly hope we can take a deeper look into the ASB program and find a way to make all students, especially those in leadership, feel seen, heard, and valued. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak to us.
Hi, Nicole Jaime, I'm a parent. First, I just want to start off by saying I re-won my state complaint, right? You guys appealed, and I won again. Yay. I'm just gonna start with the same request I usually do. Please start recording and publishing the study sessions so that we know the information that you have as well as the decision process behind it. You also held the superintendent's evaluation today at noon. So how many working parents can really go? It's just, it's not really inclusive, transparent, and it's just kind of performative access at this point. Moving on to the new skilled trades pathway for the building and construction at Rancho, which is a great program on the surface level, right? So when you look at Santa Ana Unified, where it's a two-year versus the four-year program, and that's where it kind of gets messy because if you have kiddos where you don't address their dyslexia, and so you just push along, you don't acknowledge the auditory processing, you don't acknowledge the visual processing, you lock them into one reading intervention program, it doesn't work, then they get to junior high, and you want to take away their elective at putting in resources because they need more assistance because you refuse to address it in elementary school. And then you move it to high school where they only have one elective if they're in a double class, right? So one elective. This is a four-year program versus Santa Ana's, which is two years. So if you only have one elective, and you still have resource in high school, and you have guidance counselors like Jessica Rojeda from Garden Grove High School who goes to the meetings, this is my experience from my family, so I'm sure I'm not alone. IEP kids don't get electives, right? I made a huge fuss about that. I don't mind speaking out. I speak out all the time. How many other people aren't going to speak out? So where is this training coming from? Thankfully, Valley Shad fixed it for me, but how many other families are hearing the same thing? I know we're not being picked on, so this might just be endemic, right? And also funneling into resource. I had to shoo-shoo that repeatedly with multiple kids. No, my kid gets to pick something they want to do. What if the child wants to do sports, right? That's one elective. That's gonna take elective time, you want to do sports? Or sometimes could it PE? It really depends. What if my kid liked PE and he did it all four years as his elective? Really kind of depends. But the point of the matter is, when we're looking at these programs, although they're really good, they really need to be inclusive for all students, especially since not all students go to university. University shouldn't be the end-all, be-all. So if you have children who are interested in these trade programs, but they are essentially excluded by misinformation from staff, you are excluding these kids from these programs. So please reexamine how you make programs in the future. Maybe reexamine this one on how you could change it so it can be a two-year junior/senior and be more inclusive for all students with all disabilities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next request is from Mr. Nicholas Dibs.
Members of the school board, Dr. Moffey, community members, and staff, my name is Nicholas Dibs. I was the only person at the superintendent's evaluation at noon. I think it's unconscionable that you don't allow people to call in if they can't be here. How many parents, they're busy working, many of them, they're raising children, they don't have time to come to the superintendent's evaluation. Community members are busy. You have these things at the middle of the day. One year it was at five o'clock. Even then, that wasn't good. So you need to allow people to call in, just as at this meeting, you allow people to call in. Other school districts allow it. Why can't Garden Grove? That's one point. The other point is on the superintendent's evaluation, I've sent you an email, and then a second one today, both today, and I'm asking that the superintendent's contract not be renewed for various reasons. But you're gonna renew it anyway, so when you renew it, put a three-month thing, so every three months, people can come here and give an evaluation of what they think, whether or not she should be removed or not. You heard from the first speaker, the student that spoke, okay? He's complaining about being bullied and not being treated fair. Staff, many staff members, students, and teachers are not being treated fair. So there needs to be a cultural shift in this organization. That's why I'm here, because I haven't been treated fair. I wasn't treated fair as an employee, and I wasn't treated fair when you folks or Dr. Moffey interfered in three, in two school board elections I ran in, and in two school board elections that other people ran in, there was unfair and unethical things being done with taxpayer funds and resources that weren't right, as alleged. And so I asked that our contract not be renewed and that we work for positive change. The misuse of public funds, et cetera, the smartphone policy to protect students from the internet. All across the country, school districts are banning cell phones during class time. Instead, and I gave you all the research, City of New York, City of LA Unified, the state of Utah, all kinds of districts, and then this district joined a multi-district lawsuit against the social media companies, except that now you don't comply or you don't want to ban the cell phones district-wide during class time when the studies show that student performance increases when you do so. Now, you then kick it down to 67 principals who don't want to go up against the parents on smartphones. You need to ban the smartphones and allow only plain phones on campus and on the buses to reduce bullying, to reduce cyberbullying, suicide prevention. What haven't you done? You didn't comply with AB 224 and AB 1776. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of a minute from last meeting on June 17. Any comment? You have a request for correction? Hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Trustee Deena Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Walter Munyaton, I believe is absent. Personal business? Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Len Nguyen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item three on the agenda is public hearing, presentation, and report. We have one public hearing on the initial contract proposal from GGUSD to classify employer association. I want to begin the public hearing now. We have a request to speak from Mr. Nicholas Dibs.
Okay, I'm speaking as a community member and former employee that worked in the district over 16 years. The, my understanding, and you, Dr. Moffey can correct me if I'm wrong, but our auto shop teachers, who used to be called ROP teachers, are now CTE teachers, and all the ROP or CTE at that time, they were not represented in a contract. So I realize that this is the, is this the CSEA contract you're referring to or the GGEA contract? But in any case, I'm asking that the district, if not this year, please consider having all teachers represented in a contract, and that is if they're ROP or CTE, they should not be excluded from being part of the GGEA contract process. Or you set up a separate entity, or they do, but the CTE teachers for many years were out in left field on their own, or the ROP teachers, they weren't represented by the union. So I'm asking both the union and the district to please consider allowing representation of everyone, and if they're not, if they're, they don't fall into a particular area of the contract, that you do what you can to make sure everyone is included in a contract somewhere. That's all I'm asking, to be fair to them, that they, the auto shop and the other trade teachers should all be included in a contract somewhere. And if that's being done, great, but the last I heard, no, it wasn't. So if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong about it, but I'm up here to provide some input and suggestions that, that all employees, whether they're classified or certificated or management, should all be covered somewhere, including part-time people. And so I hope you'll please consider that. It was, I felt it was wrong that our, that our three auto shop teachers that we had were not part of GGEA. Now, that's a decision for the union, but it's also a decision for the district. And if the union won't represent them, then put them in somewhere where they can have some collective bargaining influence instead of just being out there on their own with no contract. And the other thing is the substitute teachers, of which I used to be one for many years. Allow the substitutes to be represented. Have them be represented either by GGA or have their own union so that everyone who works here is represented and under a contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other request to speak?
There are none.
None. No other request to speak. The public hearing is now closed. Item four on administration, we have four A and B. I need a motion.
I'll move the item, item four, A and B.
I'll second.
Thank you. Item four A is to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Orange County Superintendent of Schools to provide a special education program for students with exceptional need for the school year 2025 and '26, with a total cost estimated to be at $90,147. Item four B is to approve the list of approved and certified non-public schools and non-sectarian schools and non-public agencies to service educational students with exceptional need for the school year 2025 and '26. Any common question? Hearing none, just call for the vote.
Trustee Deena Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Len Nguyen?
Aye.
Item five is on the programs and instruction. We have A, five A through C.
Yeah, I'll move five A through C.
Ms. Trustee Rocco, I second the motion.
Thank you. Five A is to approve the participation in the master inc. to provide instructional art program at various elementary school sites for the school year 2025 and '26. Item five B is to approve the memorandum of understanding with the UCI Pediatrics I mobile for children to provide vision services for children in transitional kindergarten and preschool effective July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. Item five C is to approve our district event, to, one event to allow 96 vocal ensemble members from Garden Grove High School to attend the choir retreat in Runyon Spring, California on January 8th to 11th, 2026. Common question? Hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Trustee Deena Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Len Nguyen?
Item six, in the business item, we have A to V, with the full alphabet.
I'll move the item six, A through V.
You like second the motion?
Thank you. It's longlist, so bear with me. Item six A is to approve amendment to the list of a school site for the multi-size modular building projects, basically to remove Rancho Alameda's High School from the list of site in connection with the preliminary services agreement and the total guarantee project cost that we approved at the last meeting. Item six B is to approve the annual insurance report on property casualty and excess insurance for the school year 2025 and '26. Six C is to approve, authorize the participation in the State of Arizona with the National Association of State Procurement Official Value Point Master Agreement Number CTR 058809 to the California participating addendum number seven dash 22 dash 70 dash 50 dash 04 with addendum number three for the purchase of Merlin Equipment Supply and Maintenance from Quadie and Inc. for the contract effective from May 14, 2025 to May 14, 2026. Item six D is to approve the second of four extension of bid number 2207 for the kitchen equipment for food services from Arrow Restaurant Equipment and Supply and to be effective from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. Item six E is to approve the first of the two extension of bid number 2314 for Medic Air LLC with an average price increase of 3%. The contract to be valid from May 8, 2025 to May 7, 2026. Item six F is to approve, accept a bid for the office and instructional supply for warehouse stock from Blick Art Material, Complete Office LLC, Lake Shore School Specialty, and the Green Lift Product at a low qualifying bid, meeting the specification terms and conditions of bid number 2419 and valid from July 16, 2025 to July 15, 2026. Item six G is to approve the bid for the fencing. Item six G is to approve the bid for the fencing project number 12 at Anthony Cook and Garden Park Elementary School from Wolverine Friends Company in the amount of $489,000 with the district allowance of $50,000 for the total cost not to exceed $539,000, under the condition of the bid number 2420. Item six H is to authorize a participating in the California multiple schedule with School Specialty LLC under the CMAS contract number four dash 23 dash 02 dash 1026 with supplement number two to purchase furniture and a contract to be valid from February 10, 2023 to February 28, 2026. Number six I to approve the acceptance and completion of California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act with purchase order to custom size, number one, custom size Inc. at Mark Trend, number two, JLM Installation Inc. at Garden Row High School, number three, to mural for schools at Pacifica High School, number four, to Case and Sun Construction Inc. at Rancho Alameda High School, number five, JLM Installation Inc. at Assessment and Registration Center, and number six, Chapman Coast Roof Company Inc. at the transportation. And that a noted completion be signed and filed and invoice process for payment. Item six J is to authorize participate, the use of a helmet Unified School District bid number PUR2023-01 as a means to purchase school and office furnishing and accessory from Dave Bang Association Inc. in a term and condition effective March 5th, 2025 to March 5th, 2026. Item six K to authorize participating in the state of Minnesota with the National Association of State Procurement Official Value Point Master Price Agreement Number 23 Euro 26 to the California participating addendum number seven dash 23 dash 70 dash 55 dash 01 with the amendment number two for the purchase of computer equipment peripheral and related services from Dell Marketing LP. The contract is valid for June 30th, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. Item six L is to approve the 6.5% average price increase on eight item from CDW for bid number 2205 for technology equipment and peripheral. Item six M is to approve the ratification of California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act in form of bid award to Benz Asphalt, Circle City Electric Inc., Golden Coast Construction, JL Carp Inc., and AutoCell Audio Inc. Item six N is to approve the first of the two extensions of request for proposal number 2316 with the food guys valid from July 17, 2025 to July 16, 2026. Item six O is to approve the first of the two extension for the request for proposal number 2317 for fresh pizza from food services from Domino Pizza and also with an average increase of price of 4.67% and Papa John with no price increase. The terms of the contract is valid from July 17, 2025 to July 16, 2026. Item six B is to approve the authorizer participation in the state of Utah in the association with the National Association of State Procurement Official Value Point Master Agreement Number MA149 to the California participating addendum number PA dash 2022 dash WDV dash AT&amp;T with amendment number two for the purchase of cellular data communication plant from AT&amp;T. The contract is valid to May 22nd, 2027. Item six Q is to authorize a participation in the state of Utah with the National Association of State Procurement Official Value Point Master Agreement Number AR3229 to the California participating addendum number seven dash 20 dash 70 dash 47 dash 06. Addendum three, supplement number 10 for the purchase of router switch, security and stored networking from Palo Alto Network Inc. with Digital Scepter Corporation as an authorized reseller. The contract is valid from June 1st, 2020 to September 30th, 2026. Item six R is to approve the agreement with the School Status LLC to provide school accountability report card with data collection and report services for the school year 2025, '26 through to 2027, '28 school years with the annual rate of $60,100. Item six S is to accept the gift in the list of the donation and gift accepted by the school site. Item six T is to reject the claim from WOW, W-O-W Law Group on the behalf of the client Hung Two and the two minor for bodily injury sustained on December 2nd, 2024. Item six U is to accept the uniform complaint report summary for the report from April 1st to June 30th, 2025, again with no complaint indicated. Item six V is to approve the purchase order and check for a total amount $46,747,615.58. Any question common on any of the item? Hearing none, let's call for the vote on item six.
Trustee Dina Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Lenwin.
Yes. Last item on the agenda, item seven, we have seven A and B. I want to report that we have item C in closed session earlier today to discuss the student, I mean, I'm sorry, superintendent evaluation with consultant from CSBA and also to discuss employee discipline and dismissal with a superintendent and assistant superintendent Jason Pivakwa and no action to report today. I need a motion for item seven A and B.
I move you approve item seven A and B.
I know.
Thank you. Item seven A is to approve the certificate personnel report. And item seven B is to approve the classified personnel report. Common question? Hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Trustee Dina Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Lenwin.
Aye. Going after the last, real last item on the agenda, discussing by the board member. We'll begin with trustee Dina Nguyen.
I have no comments, except I welcome our new student representative. Thank you for your volunteer work.
Thank you. Trustee Terry Rocco?
Yes, welcome, Kristy. You'll be the student voice for us, which is very important. We listen and we take into consideration your, your opinion in a lot of the decisions that we make. And I hope you have a great year. And I'll see, I attended the Garden Grove State of the City, as well as the Stanton State of the City, Garden Grove, of course, because we're Garden Grove District. It's nice to know that everything they share goes aligned so much with our district and our views and what's important to us. So I guess, I can, they should say that they do things Garden Grove way, because they do. And so it's always very enlightening to go. Stanton is not in Garden Grove, but my trustee area encompasses the Stanton area quite a bit. And so I feel it's important for me to have a relationship with the city of Stanton, to know what their strengths are, what their needs are, and it gives me the opportunity to meet with the community. It was nice because that one was a little different, it was in the park. And so it was an open event with the food and booths and a concert in the park. And so it was a very informal setting, but a great way to interact with the community members and the council members. So, and I attended the CTE internship culmination event, which was really good. It was like the Academy Awards. Kudos to the CTE department and to listeners for planning and executing a very meaningful event. If you attended, you got a good sense of what this program is that our kids that participated, I believe there was 93, 93 students who were placed in various businesses in our community. And so they, they get a little certificate after for completing the six-week program. Two of those weeks are spent in the classroom with the really amazing, very useful classes on helping them learn how to fill out applications, how to interview, how to conduct themselves, how to communicate, how to dress for success. And four of those weeks were spent in the actual place of business. And so that's a lot. And that's an amazing experience for a junior to have. I just feel like they're going to be a step ahead once they go out to look for a real job, right? But also the speeches that were given, the testimonials given by the students and by the places of business as to what they each got out of that, what the experience meant for them. Of course, the students very appreciative and sharing what they learned and how, also how it impacted the employees that they worked with, who probably thought, oh, we're having this, you know, 16, 17-year-old kid in here, you know? And what they learned from each other. So it was really great, as well as the, the, I guess, CEOs or directors of those businesses sharing. I was very impressed with one in particular, was Jeff from King's Shocks. This is the first time they participated. It was very moving and he did an excellent job. He was very articulate. He was a little worried and nervous about getting up there, but he did a good job of explaining to us not only the impact a student had there and how impressed they were with how prepared the students were, but how it affected the employees. And the employees saying that it was an amazing program, they wish they would have had something like this when they were growing up. So it was good feedback to hear. And it's, I just know we're going to serve even more, more and more kids every year. And I think it's just super beneficial for all, all people that were involved. Also, I know that our communities continues to have needs, many families are, oh, I had said this before, suffering from food insecurities, but also needs for mental health support and legal information. And I just want to give a shout out to a group of our GGUSD parent leaders who heated to a call of action to actually help to coordinate and put together resources. It's hard in the summer because schools are closed, our FRCs are closed, but these parents have done an amazing job of making sure that food is being delivered, that they've connected with agencies in our community that are available to help. And so get through the summer until school starts. And I know Dr. Moffey shared with us that there's a lot of things in place that will be ready to serve our parents at the full capacity, once everybody gets back to the school sites. So.
Thank you, trustee Rocco. Vice President Harden?
Well, it's not on our agenda tonight, so I can't really discuss the merits one way or another of cell phone policies. But I do want to correct a couple of misconceptions that people might have after listening to a speaker that was here earlier this evening. I hate calling out somebody who isn't in the room, but he is not here at the moment. But I do need to say a couple of things. We have repeatedly been accused by one member of our community of having kind of a Wild West approach to cell phone policy that, that, saying that basically we don't have a policy and we leave it to every school to determine what they want to do. I could see how you could get that impression just by reading the single policy statement. And maybe we need to clean that up a little bit as we go through policy review over the next few months. But that certainly is not what's happening on our campuses. At our elementary schools, our 40-plus elementary schools, the policy that is consistent across every campus is that the phone is turned off and goes in a backpack when the student arrives on campus, and it comes out of that backpack when the student leaves. It does not come out at recess, it does not come out at class, it does not come out at lunchtime. Now, I'm, I'm not sure how Mr. Debs wants to pull, wants us to police use of phones on a bus, which he mentioned tonight, which is the first time I've heard him mention that. But the policy is consistent in terms of what elementary schools in our district are doing. There may be different forms of discipline for violating the rules, and those might be specific to a school site, but the, the, the district's guidelines are very clear. And they're enforced at all of the elementary schools. The same guideline is, is in place at our intermediate schools. And I, and I want to add, I specifically have been looking for this as I go out and do school visits, and I've done more visits in the last year, now that I'm retired from my day job. I've done more visits in the last year than I had done in the, in the previous two or three years. And this is something I look for every time I'm on campus. The only time I have ever seen a phone out on an elementary school campus was with a special education student who specifically had use of the cell phone written into his individual education plan. So it, it might sound from what our speaker earlier said that we're applying policies inconsistently or leaving it up to the principals, we're not. That's what the policy is, and that's what's happening on our campuses. I can say the same at the one intermediate school that's in my area that I visit on a fairly regular basis. I can tell you, I don't see cell phones out. I don't see cell phones out in class, I don't see them during passing period, I don't see them at lunch. And that's the policy that's in place. Again, at the intermediate schools, when students show up on campus, the phone is supposed to go in the backpack. It's supposed to go away, it's supposed to be turned off, it's not supposed to ring in class. And there is progressive discipline in place for that. At the high schools, we give a little more leeway to 14 to 18-year-olds who are learning, learning to be adults. We do have policy in place that says the phone is not out in the classroom unless the teacher has asked you to have your phone out in the classroom for a specific education purpose. Phones are allowed during passing periods, during lunch. And I can tell you, on the two campuses that I visit, I actually see not as many phones out as I would expect. You do occasionally see phones out, and, and our kids, some of our kids are... You do occasionally see phones out, and, and our kids, some of our kids are just kids, our students are on campus from 8:00 in the morning till sometimes 5, 6, 7:00 in the evening or even later with after-school activities, and I find it difficult to believe that, that if we wanted to, we could enforce a policy that says you can't have your phone out of your backpack for 12 hours while you're on campus. The reality is that the use of telephone, of phones in the classroom, I've seen once, and I know for a fact that, that has been, was, was addressed by staff with the teacher involved, who was a long-term substitute, and that, you know, in my experience, it's not happening, if it is happening, it's being dealt with. So, and if, and if somebody knows otherwise, I'd like to know, and my, my email address is on the district website. So I think that's probably enough on that topic. I did have one other thing. I want to thank Christine Pyle and everybody else involved, and I'm not going to try to list everybody because I'll leave somebody out, but I especially want to thank Supervisor Vincent Sarmiento for his assistance in bringing food to families around the Santiago campus and the, all of the staff members who came out, I mean, it's summertime, that came out as volunteers, gave up a day of their time, the students who came out and gave up a day of their time, and even some of our graduates who came up and gave up a day of their time. Immigration is a difficult issue in our community. Getting people fed shouldn't be, and, I mean, I think we should all be able to agree that if there are people in our community who need food, there are people in our community who have food to distribute, that we should help them. We have the resources, we have the location that we can use for distribution. I want to thank everybody who was involved in that, hundreds of families received food, some of whom desperately needed it, and I especially want to thank the Garden Grove Police Department. We had a traffic, potentially a traffic Armageddon on Trask Avenue at, at 11:00 on Friday morning. I actually couldn't get to Santiago from the direction that I came, I had to turn around and go back and go around the other way and come back and park across the street from the school, coming in from the east instead of from the west. It, it could have been Armageddon, but thanks to the folks at GGPd, we got a lot of help in directing traffic and alleviating the traffic issues, and some creative solutions on their part for helping us to keep traffic moving on Friday so that everybody that needed to get in and pick up food was able to do that. So, so special call out for our friends at the Garden Grove Police Department for helping us with that, and for everybody involved in that process last Friday. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. First of all, I want to, again, welcome Kristi for joining us. You'll be the eyes and ear for the board, because for something like that, like a cellphone, we want to ask you, how is it holding up out there? How is it? It's okay, it's just something we can do. That's what we expect to hear from you, and you'll be in a first class, first crop of the student senate. This is something I dream up, because you'll be the senator, you'll be the IC, I mean, you, we will put you in advisory capacity to tell us what's going on with the student, because after all, those that are customers that we serve, remember, the customer is the king. That's what we serve, that's what we need to listen to, that's where we make sure that we do the best that we can, and we trust it on you and the student senate to do that. I look forward to, to working with the senate, with you, to, to help us out in, in, in your capacity. Welcome, so like, again, enjoy your summer now, we'll be more excited when you come. And also, because Mr. Minetan, Walter Minetan is not here, but if he's here, I'm pretty sure, he will report on his extraordinary effort for the food distribution. In the last few weeks, he and his wife, council member, Jeanne Minetan, have been leading the effort to, for many food distribution. I'm very impressed, not, not only my, my colleagues, fellow member to lead in that effort, but sort of level of support for the community to come out, to share whatever they can, look at the level of support, look at the dedication of the volunteer, the student. I'm very impressed, and then this is, this big volume of our community being out there just, just to share whatever little I could. I, I'm very proud to be a resident in this district and a member of this community, I'm very proud of trustee Minetan for taking the leadership on that, and thank you very much for doing that. And now we look like we're in the middle of the summer, but the next meeting will come back, that will be August 5th, that will be in the middle of the super week, getting high gear back to school. So if you haven't done any vacation yet, do it soon, before the time run out on you. So next week, next time we come back in a meeting, when I will be there, and speaking of super week, I mean, I would like to say that Dr. Moffey will present, and the leadership team will present the keynote speak, right, on August 6th. So I invite everyone to come out and to, to get, get rolling, get started on our newest science school year, and on August 5th, I will also present my first workshop on Vietnamese culture, so I don't know, I'm trying to learn a rope here, so, to, to get into the phase, thank you very much. So with that, I want to announce the next meeting will be on August 5th, and will begin at 5:00 PM on the study session, and the one after that will be September 2nd, also begin with the, with a process at 5:00 PM. With that, the meeting is now adjourned.